So, what we learned in 1913 is that the United States, not to be confused, the United States of America, two separate entities. They transferred all the assets of the colonists. These people were chiefly British. They're not white people. They're not even the sovereign Americans, which America is a political term. Because we're the Aboriginal indigenous people, we're the Moors, Morbikanonites. So, America is a contemporary term, it's a political term. So therefore, what you must understand is, the colonists, who are chiefly British, transferred the assets of the Moors over into a trust called the Federal Reserve. And the Federal Reserve is a corporation, it's an international bank, but it's a corporation. It's not under any type of government whatsoever. It is a standalone corporation, all by itself. It's international. It does not come under the auspices of the United States of America or the United States. It is a standalone corporation, that must be known. And they own all the assets of the United States of America and the United States jurisdictions. That must be understood, alright? So, what else did we learn? Why did they crash it in 1913? When Nobudal Lee is coming on the scene in 1913, he's putting in work. He's putting pressure on the colonists because he's making claims under consanguinity. He's making claims as a Moor. He's making claims to the treaties, right? And then here comes France. France is working from the outside in. Nobudal Lee is working from the inside out and they're flanking. They're flanking the United States of America, not to be confused with the United States, two separate entities, right? They're putting pressure. So, the United States of America, they panic. So, Woodrow Wilson goes to Jekyll Island, right? Remember that? He sets up the bill that now they take over to Washington DC. Washington DC, DC stands for District of Columbia, the corporation. They pass a bill called the Federal Reserve Act. And lo and behold, what they do, they transfer the assets of the Moors into a different trust.
Can I ask how much it was?
I don't know, mother.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good question. It's hard to count it. Yeah. Okay, back to point. So, what we must understand is this. Why is the United States so erratic? Why are they doing things so radical? We must understand that the Moors are always trying to get their estate back. At the same time, France has always been a thorn in the side of the United States of America. Why? Because France has never forgot about the fact that they helped the colonists to defeat the British in order for them to get their sovereignty in the land. France has never forgot about that. You must understand that France signed a treaty with the United States of America in 1778. The United States of America in 1798, under the Alien Act of 1798, decided to cut ties with France. This is well after the fact, after they had defeated the British, alright? So, what you must understand is, France has always been trying to help the Moors to get their sovereignty back, alright? So, today, what we're gonna learn is a little bit more about history. We must always study law and history. Your mothers must understand law and history. Why? We must point out the problems. And once we point out the problems, then we point out the solutions. There's no use in talking about problems unless we talk about solutions, right? Alright. So therefore, the mothers have to fix it with a pen. And how do the mothers fix it with a pen? We must start understanding legislation. That's exactly what we're studying right now. We're studying law. The mothers must study law, that way when they put together a matriarchal council, they can enforce said law. Because first you gotta figure out what went wrong and what you have to do to make sure we don't repeat that history again, alright? So, they'll continue to study international law. So, today, we're gonna talk about extraterritorial jurisdiction. I talk about that quite often. Extraterritorial jurisdiction, which is really what you call compulsory jurisdiction. Compulsory jurisdiction. But we'll talk about extraterritorial jurisdiction. And we're also going with quite a few documents today, so prepare yourself to do a lot of research, alright? So, first thing we're gonna do in the Black's Law Dictionary Fourth Edition is go into definition of extraterritoriality, alright? So, we can have one of the mothers read the definition of extraterritoriality, that would be great.
The extraterritorial operation of laws. That is, their operation upon persons, rights, or juror relations existing between the limits of the enacting state, but still amenable to its laws. A term used especially formally to express in lieu of the word extratoriality. Extraterritoriality, quote-unquote, Q dot V dot. The exemption from the obligation of the laws of a state granted to foreign diplomatic agents, warships, etc. The term is used to indicate jurisdiction exercised by a nation in other countries by treaty as by the United States in China or Egypt, or by its own ministers or councils in foreign lands. Crime is said to be extraterritorial when committed in a country other than that of the forum in which the party is tried.
Alright, thank you, mother. So, let's go back and do our interpretation. What did we just read? Moors must always understand, we must learn how to read. What does that mean? We must use forensics. We have to go back and try to get an understanding, an overstanding, and an inner standing at all times. And every time we read, it needs to comprehend, forensics. So, let's go back and use forensics, okay? Let's examine. Let's use Moor science, okay? So, first things first. Keep in mind, why are we reading the definition of this word? You must understand what the United States of America, not to be confused, the United States is doing to the Moors, okay? But we're gonna talk about this a lot more in detail today. So, watch this. Extraterritoriality. The extraterritorial operations of laws. That is, their operation upon persons, not people, persons, rights, or juror relations. What is juror relations? Judges, right? Legislation. Existing beyond the limits of the enacting state. So, what's happening? The United States of America, not to be confused, the United States is extending their jurisdiction of laws way past their limits of what the United States of America is supposed to do as it relates to Moors, okay? That must be understood. They're extending their jurisdiction over into our jurisdiction. You're talking about two separate nations, keep that in mind. Must always be cognizant of what we're talking about right now, okay? Two separate nations, the United States of America and the Moors nation, okay? So, the United States of America is overextending as an overlay on top of the Moors. They're not supposed to do that, it's supposed to be two separate nations. But they're extending themselves, which means they're usurping our rights as Moors in our own homeland, okay? Now, watch this. So, they're explaining now. Keep in mind, the colonists wrote the book. But they're using our law to enslave us. Always remember this. This is not the so-called colonist law. This is our law that we have forgotten through psychosis and cognitive dissonance. And now they're using our own law to enslave us. Always remember that, okay? Let's continue. Submental to law. A term used especially formally to express in lieu of the word extraterritoriality, the exemption from the obligation of the laws of a state granted to foreign diplomatic agents, warships, etc. So, what's happening here? So, there's exemptions as well for certain diplomats who come over. They don't have to worry about extraterritoriality, okay? They're exempt. They have what's called diplomatic immunity. They don't have to worry about being usurped. They're still under the auspices of the laws. So therefore, someone from China comes over to Morocco, they still come with their law with them. They don't have to worry about the local laws of Morocco. They still get to maintain the laws of China, so therefore those laws travel with them abroad, okay? Let's continue. The term is used to indicate jurisdiction exercised by a nation in other countries. What's happening? So, the United States of America is exercising extraterritorial jurisdiction over Morocco. It's extended, okay? That's a violation of law as it relates to international law. Let's continue. How are they doing it? By treaty as by the United States in China or Egypt, they're giving examples, or by its own ministers or councils in foreign lands. Crime, I say again, crime. I say again, crime is said to be extraterritorial when committed in a country other than that of the forum on which the party is tried. So, what's happening? The United States nationals who have a state. The United States of America tries to use that extraterritorial jurisdiction to overlap as an overlay. Now, they're committing a crime. They can't do it. So, what's been happening? Moors have been in courts. Moors have been filling out documentation. And the United States of America has been saying to Moors, "Don't have a state." So, the United States of America saying, "We're not overlapping nothing. There's no extension. We're not overextending our jurisdiction." Because guess what? Moors don't have a state to have any type of extraterritorial jurisdiction over. Don't get me wrong, ADPAC has a state. We're poised to have full powers because we've checked the boxes. What's happening? The United States of America is saying, "The Moors don't have a state." So, there is no extraterritorial jurisdiction. They're not usurping Moors' state rights because Moors don't have a state. But once the Moors have a state, keep in mind, ADPAC has a state, but the other Moors create their states, not the United States of America. They try to overlap to a bridge, to usurp through use of force our state governments. That is what? A crime. That's a crime. I'm gonna go deeper, so just pay attention. Okay. Now, I wanna go over a document that a lot of Moors have been using, but they have misconceptions because they haven't been using what's called Fundamental Understandings of International Law. Tajree Bay always says, "We must have a nation state." A nation state. A nation state. But what is he saying? "You must understand international law." Moors have been reading documents but not studying international law in order for them now to have a cross-reference exactly how to enforce their rights. Watch this. Let's go to what's called Title 22, United States Code, subsection 141 through 143. What is that? That is a United States code that Moors love to put on their documents. And guess what? Our concepts have been flawed, I'll talk about it today. Alright. So, we can have one of the mothers read Title 22, which is, if on the document says Title 22, Chapter 2, Sections 141 through 143, alright? And it talks about, the heading is what, mother? With Title 22, one of the mothers can read.
Foreign Relations and Intercourse, page 954, Chapter 2, Counsel Reports, Section 141, Judicial Authority Generally. To carry into full effect the provisions of the treaties of the United States with certain foreign countries, the Ministers and Councils of the United States in China, Siam and Turkey. Morocco, Muscat.
Absinthe.
Absinthe, Persia, and the territories formerly a part of the former Ottoman Empire, including Egypt. Duly appointed to reside therein shall, in addition to other powers and duties imposed upon them, respectively by the provisions of such treaties, respectively be invested with judicial authority described in this chapter, which shall apparent...
Apportaine.
...apportaine to the office of Minister and Counsel and be a part of the duties belonging thereto, wherein and so far as the same is allowed by treaty and in accordance with the usages of the countries in their intercourse with the Franks or other foreign Christian nations.
Stop. Okay, thank you, mother. Let's go back and use our interpretation. This is a really bland read, right? It's not really fancy, but watch this. Title 22, Foreign Relations and Intercourse. What's happening? The United States of America, not to be confused, the United States is now setting aside legislation, their domestic legislation as it relates to foreign relations. Foreign relations with who? Moors. That must be understood, with the Moors. Because they know they have usurped the Moors, okay, under extraterritorial jurisdiction. Alright? Now, watch this. Section 141 talks about what? Judicial authority. What's that? Judges. Legislation is created and then judges carry out that law. They interpret the law, they enforce the law. So, you're talking about judges. And when I said, "The judges are the gatekeepers to the jurisdiction." They protect the legislators. So, you got judges on the front line protecting the legislators back here. Legislators write the so-called law and the judges and the police enforce it, and they protect the legislators, okay? So, judges and police are what you call your front line of defense. They are the gatekeepers, okay? So, that's why I said judicial. That's your senators working together with their appointed judges, alleged judges, alright? To do what? To carry out into full effect the provisions of the treaties of the United States with certain foreign country. Who's the foreign country? Morocco. Must always keep that in mind, they're talking code. The Ministers and Councils of the United States in China, Siam, Turkey, Morocco, Muscat, Absinthe, Persia, and the territories formerly a part of the former Ottoman Empire, including Egypt. So, as soon as they say Ottoman and they say Morocco, that's one expansive empire. It expands. So, you're talking about the continent of America, you're talking about the continent of Africa, you're talking about the continent of Asia, you're talking about the continent of so-called Europe. That's the world. That's the truth. Watch this. So, duly appointed to reside within shall, in addition to other powers and duties imposed upon them. So, what they're talking about right now, they're telling you, they're imposing some powers on them. Who's a them? Moors. Respectfully by provisions of such treaties. So, what are they using? Treaties to enforce some rights on top of Moors. Watch this. They're spelling it out, but you gotta catch it. Respectfully be invested with judicial authority. What authority? Judges' authority. Described in this chapter, which shall apparent apportaine to the office of Minister and Counsel and be a part of the duties belonging thereto within, and so far as the same is allowed by treaty. They're talking treaty, treaty, treaty. And according with the usage of the countries in their intercourse with the Franks or other foreign Christian nations. So, it's a very boring read. What are they saying right here? Let's keep it simple. The United States of America on their document is saying, "The United States is telling you, they still have some judicial powers over Morocco." Because you gotta remember now, it's listed under what? Judicial authority. They mentioned Morocco. Watch this. Now, we're gonna get into Section 142, which is called the General Jurisdiction in Criminal Cases. So, now I say judges, now we're gonna read what's under status of criminal and civil. Because they already said the judge is judicial. Now, we're gonna learn what type of jurisdiction they think they have over Morocco from a criminal and civil perspective. Watch this. Go ahead and read it, mothers.
General Jurisdiction in Criminal Cases. The officers mentioned in Section 141 of this title are fully empowered to arraign and try in the manner provided for this chapter. All citizens of the United States charged with offenses against the law committed in such countries respectively, and to sentence such offenders in the manner in this chapter authorized, and each of them is authorized to issue such processes as are suitable and necessary to carry this authority into execution.
Okay. Now, we must use our Moor science based upon reading. What am I saying? You gotta use some forensics. They're talking Moor's code. Moor's code, M-O-R-S-E. Moor's code, what's that? The secret societies, because they know Negro blacks and coloreds don't like to read. And they know Moors don't read too well either. Because Moors with skim words think they got the understanding and they run off and start scribing documents. Watch this. So, what Moor science should we use? Watch this. Take it from the top. General Jurisdiction of Criminal Cases. Remember now, they're talking about how they're going to enforce something on Moroccans. The officers mentioned in Section 141, you see I has underlined? They're trying to give you a code. Go look back up 141. Okay. So, we go back and look at 141. What was they talking about in 141? Judges, judicial. Listen. They said, "Go back and look at 141." Judges, they tell the judges, "You still have authority over these Moors." Watch this. Of the title are fully empowered to arraign and try in a manner provided for this chapter. What about this chapter? This is for criminal chapter. You gotta use your Moor science. Watch this. All citizens. You see I has underscored two lines? That's Moor science. You gotta use Moor science to see what these colonists are doing. What did they just do? Moors, this is what Moors been missing, Moor subjects, not Moorish nationals. Moor subjects been missing this. Moors been running around saying, "We insulted your Moor subjects." They're happy. Guess what? You're admitting on the record, you're still a citizen. Citizen what? United States. Watch. It's got double underlining. All citizens. Why are they saying that? Listen. Because if Moors don't have a state of their own, you're still a citizen or a subject of the country that's protecting you. So therefore, they're talking Moor science right here. They're talking Moor's code, saying these Moors are still citizens, they don't even realize it because they don't have a state. So, Moors have been filling out documents. Can't wait to put Title 22, United States Code, 141 and 143, and the colonists been laughing at us. They saying, "They don't even know how to read." We put the answers to the test right in front of their face. I don't say that as a negative or condemnation of any Moor that been putting the work out here, because we've been trying to put brakes on this thing. I applaud everybody's been trying. But guess what? We gotta fix this thing. We gotta start studying international law and learn how to read. Tajree Bay says, "People either don't know how to read and those who can read won't." He's correct. We don't keep breaking down, it's Moor science today. Watch this. So, I'm gonna say it for the record again. There's only three classifications of Moors. Listen. There's Moor's subjects, Moorish subjects, Moorish proteges, proteges. We learned about that, if you go back and watch the video, the French protectorate, they call us proteges. It's a French word, proteges. And then there's Moorish nationals. There's only three classifications of Moors. Moors must understand this. Moor subjects, Moor's proteges, Moorish nationals. What makes you a Moor subject? You don't have a state. What makes you a Moor's protege? That means you're on somebody's protection list, but you still don't have a state. You're still a state in this person. You come under protection of somebody. But if you're a Moorish national, that's because you have a state, you have a constitution, open allegiance, birth records, constable court, etc., etc., etc. You have a provincial flag and a seal. You are poised to have full powers as Moorish nationals. Until then, you're still a Moor subject or a Moorish protege. Those are three categories. Listen. Everybody has a right to self-determination. It's called Islam. I self law and master. You got a right to be a part of one of these three. You have a right. However, if you want to enforce your rights under treaty rights, because they're talking treaties, you have to be a Moorish national with a state. That's the truth. Moors must start understanding this. We must comprehend law. Let me continue from the top. The officers mentioned in Section 141, 141 judicial, judges, they're talking secretly, you judges still got power. Of the title are fully empowered to arraign and try in the manner provided for this chapter. What chapter? Criminal chapter. All citizens, Moors are citizens of the United States. Of the United States charged with offenses against the law. What law? Their laws, the colonists' law. Committed in such countries respectively and to sentence such offenders. What are you offending? The colonists' law, because you don't have your own state. Listen. In a manner in this chapter authorized. Why do they underscore it? They underline it, see? They're talking Moor science, Moor's code. But we must use Moor science and understand what they're doing. In the manner in this chapter authorized. What's authorized in this chapter? Criminal cases. Most Moors are reading right past that. Why? Because they ain't reading, they pronouncing words. That's not a negative, not a condemnation of any Moor. I applaud your work. But we've been operating in an incompetent manner because we have misconceptions. Misconceptions, which means our concepts have been flawed about real law. They've been giving us the answers to the test the whole time. This document came out in 1956. It's the year 2021. Let's continue. And each of them is authorized. Who's a them? The judges. They underscored in Section 141. You gotta understand Moor science to read these things. To issue such process as are suitable and necessary to carry out this authority and to execution. What's execution? Execution. Off with your head. Because they're executives of the district of the Federal Reserve. When we looked up the definition of Federal Reserve, it said, "Definition" means district. And districts have executives who oversee it, including these pseudo-judges. They're not judges, they're administrative clerks. They're not real judges. They're executioners, just like these police out here. That must be known. Moors have misconceptions to think that this 141 protects us. It only protects Moor nationals. I'll prove it. Let's continue. Okay, so, Title 22, Chapter 2, Section 143, alright? So, we read 141, that's what? Judges. We read 142, now they're talking about what the judges do? Go ahead and usurp. Criminal cases, execute them. That's everything from a $50 broken tell life all the way to life in prison. That's what execution is. Execution of what? Legislation, their statutes, codes, ordinances, policies, and sometimes a death sentence. That's the truth. Okay, now, let's start understanding 143. Why are we studying this? Because the Moors have been using Title 22, United States Code, subsection 141 and 143, thinking it's giving them some remedy. And it is not because their concepts have been flawed, misconception. I'll prove it. Okay, mother. Title 22.
Title 22, Chapter 2, Section 143, General Jurisdiction in Civil Cases.
Stop. So, we went from criminal, now we're talking civil. Okay? So, they're checking the boxes. Continue, mother.
Such officers are also invested with all the judicial authority necessary to execute the provisions of such treaties respectively in regard to civil rights, whether of property or persons, and they shall entertain jurisdiction in matters of contract at the court where nearest to which it was to be executed and in all other matters at the court where are nearest to which the damage complained of was sustained. Provided such court be one of the ports at which the United States are represented by Counsel, such jurisdiction shall embrace all controversies between citizens of the United States or others provided for by such treaties respectively.
Alright. So, we're talking civil matters. Why do you keep talking about ports? Alright, so we talking civil matters. Why they keep talking about ports? You have to remember, we talked about Noah's Ark. They're using Admiralty and maritime law saying that the whole world is underwater, that North America is underwater, and that everything they're using now on the Admiralty and maritime law is based upon vessels, ships. But remember, you're also a vessel too. You have blood vessels. So they're talking on multiple levels right now. Okay? Also, you gotta catch some other choice words. You gotta use your Morse science, because they're using Morse code. Watch this. So title twenty-two, chapter two, section one four three, Moors love this. General jurisdiction in civil cases, Moors say, they don't have no rights, they don't have no jurisdiction over us from criminal or civil. Watch this. Such officers also invested with all the judicial authority. Who they talking about? Judges, barristers, cops. They say to execute the provisions of such treaties. They keep talking about treaties. So you must understand treaties is supreme law of the land. That's why they keep bringing it up. Respectively in regard to civil rights. Who keeps talking about civil rights? People who think they're crazy. See, now you know who they talking about. Moors, unconscious Moors. Whether the property of persons, not people, persons, persons is what? Property. Of who? The United States, not to confuse the United States of America. Persons is an artificial construct. It's a nom de guerre. It's listed under what's called the Fourteenth Amendment for corporations. So therefore, persons is not people. It's a different classification under what's called a caste system. So soon as they call you a person, they immediately are trying to declassify you, meaning they're trying to denationalize you and trying to put, trying to put you under a status called chattel. Chattel, which is a compound word for Christian cattle. Chattel. That's the truth. Continue. And they, who's a they? Them judicial. Shall entertain jurisdiction. Shall entertain jurisdiction. Shall entertain jurisdiction. So they claim they have jurisdiction over who? They told you in the first paragraph, Morocco. Who's Morocco? Moors. Listen. In matters of contract at the port where or nearest to which it was to be executed and in all other matters at the port where or nearest to which the damage complained or was sustained provided such port be one of the ports at which the United States are represented by counsel. Such jurisdiction shall embrace all controversies between citizens of the United States or others. Wait a minute. They're just telling you right here that the judges over criminal and civil matters still have jurisdiction over who? Citizens of the United States. Who's a citizen of the United States? Moors subjects, Moors proteges. They're still citizens of the United States. Why? Because they don't have a state to call themselves Moors nationals. So you fall under the guidelines of the statutes jurisdiction of the United States of America, not confused with the United States. They tell you right there, one four three, they have jurisdiction. They list at the parties. Listen, the parties must be known. Didn't they list the parties first in section one four one? They went right in to tell you what jurisdiction they have, criminal and civil. But Moors been using this document. You know why? Because they do have rights as Moors. Under this document, if they ain't Moors subjects or Moors proteges, they must be Moors nationals with a state. But the United States of America, it's their job to tell us that. We have to protect ourselves. We must recognize ourselves. We must be competent in international law. We have been getting this wrong. How do we fix it, is the question? You need a state, mothers. Only the mothers can fix this. Your son's been running role because your sons just want to fix it. They're excited. They just want to get out of harms way. They got pain. They just want to fix it. As soon as they read something, they think they read it, they think they got it. Oh, I got this covered. They zip right past the most important vital elements, critical elements of documents. Now it's more having caught these specifics. But Moors nationals do. Watch this. Now I'm gonna get a little deeper on this same document, because Moors love this document. Watch this. Now I'm gonna go a little deeper with the, what they call the public law. Moors pulled out the public law that goes into the details of title twenty-two, United States Code, subsection one four one through one four three. Now when we get some details, what does the United States of America, not to confuse the United States, really say about what we just read? It's called public law. August first nineteen fifty-six, this is your House Representatives. I believe it's your sin. Just not even going to get into the details of what we just read, right? Okay, if we can have the mothers, go ahead and start reading where it says, whereas.
Whereas the councils of the United States of Morocco are permitted to exercise jurisdiction over American nationals under the treaty between the United States and Morocco signed September sixteen eighteen thirty-six and the Act of Al.
Algeceris.
Algeceris, signed April seventh nineteen oh six and the exercise by custom and usage the same jurisdiction over subjects of Morocco or others who may be designated as proteges under the convention. I'm sorry, designated as quote-unquote proteges under the Convention of Madrid signed July third eighteen eighty. And whereas Morocco is now the only foreign country where the councils of the United States exercised such jurisdictions and whereas it is the policy of the United States to discontinue the exercise of extraterritorial jurisdiction in Morocco at such times as it becomes appropriate.
Stop. So let's go back and use some more science. Most Moors will go straight to that last sentence, and that's where they hang their feds. Watch this. I'm just gonna read the last sentence. It says, whereas it is the policy of the United States to continue the exercise of extraterritorial jurisdiction in Morocco at such time as it become appropriate. Everybody say, oh, the United States don't have extraterritorial jurisdiction. They don't have jurisdiction over Moors. They misunderstand, misconceptions. Their concepts are flawed. Watch this. I'll take it from the top. They're giving you the answers to the test, but Moors don't read, we pronounce words. Watch this. Whereas the councils of the United States in Morocco, they're letting you know the United States is in Morocco are permitted to exercise jurisdiction over American nationals. Stop. They can exercise jurisdiction over American nationals. Who's the American nationals? The Moors. But the United States of America citizens also claim to be American nationals. So they're talking both. So-called residents, because they're making a claim to the Moors as their chattel property as being nationals as well. Watch this. I'll take it from the top. Whereas the council of the United States in Morocco permitted to exercise jurisdiction over American nationals and under the treaty between the United States and Morocco signed September sixteen eighteen thirty-six. So they're talking about the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of eighteen thirty-six. And the Act of Algeceris, signed April seventh nineteen oh six. You gotta go back and do your research. We talked about that. And the exercise by custom and usage the same jurisdiction over subjects of Morocco. Remember, there's three classifications. They just told you. They have what? Jurisdiction over who? Subjects of Morocco. They tell you verbatim right in front of your face. Most people ain't catching that. Or others who may be designated as what? Proteges. They have jurisdiction over Moors subjects and proteges. Guess who they don't have jurisdiction over? Moors nationals. Do you see how slick they threw in the word American nationals? If you're a Moors national, i.e. a Moors according to the treaty, the treaty say you're a Moors. But they don't have jurisdiction over Moors nationals, because that would be a crime to now try to have extraterritorial jurisdiction over Moors nationals who have a state who are following international law. The Moors used this public law. They read it proudly, misinterpreted. That's not a negative, a condemnation of any more, any more out here putting in work. I appreciate you. But now we must start understanding the fundamentals, the proper concepts of law. Watch this. I'm gonna go back to where it says, and the exercise by, so it says, and the exercise by custom and usage. What does custom usage mean? They just, under custom usage, they used to just, Moors being incompetent. Moors being NBCs. That's what they're saying. The same jurisdiction over subjects of Morocco or others who may be designated as proteges under the Convention of Madrid signed July third eighteen eighty. Know they keep talking about treaties. And whereas Morocco is now the only foreign country where the councils of the United States exercised such jurisdiction. They're telling you they got jurisdiction over Moors. Right there, they said, the United States is the only country that's got some jurisdiction of these Moors. Where? Commonly known, North America, the Moroccan Empire. The United States is the last country on planet Earth, so-called country, to have jurisdiction over Moors. Why? Because the Moors don't have a state. That's why. Watch this. Whereas Morocco is now the only foreign country where the councils of the United States exercised such jurisdiction. They're telling you they got jurisdiction. And whereas the policy of the United States to discontinue the exercise of extraterritorial, extraterritorial jurisdiction in Morocco at such time as it becomes appropriate. Moors missed that part about appropriate. What are they saying? We still got jurisdiction, but when these Moors get a state, that's when we can't use extraterritorial jurisdiction no more. Why? Because then the Moors are no longer subjects, they're no longer proteges, they're just nationals. We must understand what we're reading, Moors. That's the truth. Okay, let's continue the reading. Go ahead, mother, please.
Resolved by the Senate and House of Representatives of the United States of America and Congress assembled that the relinquishment by the president at such times as he considered this appropriate of the counselor jurisdiction of the United States in Morocco is hereby approved in sections sixteen ninety-three, forty-eighty-three, and forty-ninety-one inclusive forty-ninety-seven to forty-one twenty-two inclusive and forty-one twenty-five to forty-one thirty inclusive of the revised statutes as amendment are repealed effective upon the date which the president determines to be appropriate for the relinquishment of such jurisdiction except so far as may be necessary to dispose of cases then pending to the counselor courts in Morocco.
Okay. So what have we learned? Approved August first nineteen fifty-six. Thank you, mother. Let's go back to the top. They're giving you more secrets. Moors love using this. Totally misconceptions based upon how it should be used. Resolved by the Senate and House of Representatives of the United States of America, United States of America, United States of America. I thought there was the United States. Nineteen fifty-six. They turned to the United States in eighteen seventy-one. See how they keep bouncing back and forth between two jurisdictions, the United States of America, not to confuse the United States. They use them interchangeably. Why? Because when they're talking international law, they say, United States of America. When they're talking domestic, they say, United States. So if they're talking United States, America, they talking internationally. That's why they keep talking about treaties and dealing with Moors. You gotta catch it. Watch this. That the relinquishment, relinquishment by the president at such time as he considers this appropriate of the council jurisdiction of the United States in Morocco is hereby approved and sections. On the council jurisdiction, United States in Morocco is hereby approved and sections. You get all your sections. Then it continues to say, inclusive of the revised statutes as amended are repealed effective upon the date which the president determines to be appropriate for the relinquishment of such jurisdiction except so far as may be necessary to dispose of cases then pending in constable courts in Morocco. But wait a minute. They're admitting they're in Morocco. They're saying they're gonna get rid of any cases once Moors figure out that they need a state. Until then, they're gonna maintain sections one four one, one four two, and one four three, which is execution, adjudication of Moors subjects, Moors proteges. Until Moors figure out they need a state. So yeah, they're saying, they're playing a game. They're saying, yeah, we'll remove extraterritorial jurisdiction. Because we know Moors don't have a state. They're playing with words, but Moors been laughing at us the whole time. But it ain't their fault. It's the Moors' fault for not really comprehending what they're reading. If Moors don't have a state, then that means the United States of America can't usurp your state. So they're saying, we won't do no extraterritorial jurisdiction. Wink, wink. Because these Moors ain't got a state. This is nineteen fifty-six. We're in the year twenty twenty-one. That's not a condemnation of all the Moors that been putting in work, but we must start now putting things in proper sequential order. Understanding that first, we need to put together your nationality, proclaim your nationality, and start checking the boxes. Until then, we're still stateless people. Moors subjects. Let me continuously prove this to you. One of the things we have to constantly understand is that France has been trying to help us with the answers to the test. Always remember that France is the common denominator to working side by side with the Moors. They have been since the year sixteen thirty-one. So in sixteen thirty-one, it's called the Franco-Morocco Treaty. France and the Sultan of Morocco came together, put together a treaty. Ever since sixteen thirty-one, we're in the year twenty twenty-one. That's nearly four hundred years of history between Moors and France. Has it been an up and down relationship? Yes, it's like a marriage. But a partnership, an alliance, an ally nonetheless. People ask the question, well, why did the United States just relinquish jurisdiction in Morocco all of a sudden? You must understand the history, Moors. It's because of what France did in nineteen fifty-two. Let's put it in proper sequential order. In nineteen fifty-two, France took the United States of America to the International Court of Justice because France was claiming what's called jurisdiction and protections over the Moroccan Empire at that time. So watch this. Moors keep saying, the United States don't have jurisdiction over Moors. Guess what? That's false. That's not true. They still have jurisdiction over Moors, there are Moors subjects and Moors proteges. I'm gonna keep proving that today. I got reference points. Watch this. So what you do is, for people at home who want to find a reference point, you're gonna look up France versus United States nineteen fifty-two, the ICJ case. Look up what's called the judgment, and you'll get that document. Okay, so we have the mothers read the title, then we go straight to sections two and three. Watch this. Go ahead, mother.
Case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. The proceedings in the.
So what date, mother?
Oh, judgment of twenty-seventh August nineteen fifty-two.
Okay, so stop. So we just read some nineteen fifty-six documents, right? We go back four years, nineteen fifty-two, because now we're putting things in sequential order. Understand, why do we do all, why do the United States just just. We go back four years, nineteen fifty-two, because now we're putting things in sequential order, understand, why do we do all, why do the United States just jump up all of a sudden, just wanna just relinquish some jurisdiction? Because they got the answers to the test on how to hold on to these Moors. Watch this. Go ahead, mother.
The proceedings in the case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco were instituted under the United States
Against.
Against the United States by an application of the government of the French Republic.
Stop, so France is bringing them into court, dealing with a dispute, one nation versus another nation, cause they both got states, cause if they didn't have a state, they couldn't go to the ICJ. Let's continue.
The submissions of the parties related to the following principal points. The application to nationals of the United States of the residential decree of December thirtieth nineteen forty-eight by which imports without official allocation of currency imports from the United States were in the French zone of Morocco subjected to a system of licensing control.
Stop. So first things first, France is arguing with the United States of control over territory over the Moroccan land, okay? But what's germane to this subject? We're gonna go down to now, articles two and three, show you exactly what the judges said in the International Court of Justice about Moors and the United States jurisdiction, watch this, reference point. Okay, mother, if you could read section two, please.
Two, quote-unquote unanimously with regard to counselor jurisdiction in the French zone of Morocco, the United States is entitled to exercise such jurisdiction in accordance with the terms of its treaty with Morocco of September sixteenth eighteen thirty-six, that is to say, in all disputes civil or criminal between citizens or proteges of the United States.
Stop. Let's read it again. This is the ICJ. Fifteen judges unanimously, all fifteen, said what? With regard to a council jurisdiction in the French zone of Morocco, what's the French zone of Morocco? That's the Moroccan Empire. The United States is entitled to exercise such jurisdiction in accordance with the terms of this treaty with Morocco of seventeen, September sixteenth eighteen thirty-six. Said, say, excuse me, that it so say, that in all disputes, civil or criminal between citizens or proteges of the United States. The United States has jurisdiction over Moors. There are still subjects and proteges. Moors been out here filling out documents. Average of, average of jurisdiction quote warranto questioning the colonists. Colonists saying, y'all don't read instructions. Y'all don't have a state. Y'all consider ipso juror, Moors subjects, you don't have a state. Y'all consider Moors proteges, you don't have a state. Which means, the United States of America, not to be confused, the United States gets to continue to classify you as a United States citizen. Which means their laws are applicable to these people who call themselves conscious Moors. That's not a negative. That's just a demonstration of the proof, the de jure proof, from a world court that, what you call, non-bias incompetent. Why? Because international law of the Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty-nine says what? Watch this. Article one says what? Scope of the present convention, the present convention applies to treaties between states. Moors don't have a state, so therefore in the international law, you can enforce treaties, which means you're still a subject and a protege. You ain't a Moors national, you are a stateless people with a nationality. Okay, mother, go ahead and read section three for me, please.
Three, by ten votes to one, it is also entitled to exercise counselor jurisdiction in all cases, civil or criminal, brought against citizens or proteges of the United States to the extent, extent required by the provisions of the Act of Al-Jusseris relating to counselor jurisdiction.
Okay, so, let's go back and do our interpretations, they're in a strict sense. Watch this. Moors say, the United States don't have jurisdiction over Moors. That's not true. The question is, is what type of Moor? Are you a Moors subject? Are you a Moors protege? Or are you a Moors national? Cause you got a right to pick one of them. Watch this. So what does the ICJ say? International law, number three, section two of their judgment, by ten votes to one, is also entitled to exercise counselor jurisdiction in all cases, civil or criminal, brought against citizens or proteges of the United States. To the extent required by provisions of the Act of Al-Jusseris related to counselor jurisdiction. So which Moors? Is the question. Which type of Moor are you? There's only three classifications, Moors, listen. Reference point. The ICJ says you're still a United States citizen. Moors must comprehend, you only got three classifications, Moors. Subject, protege, national, that's it, pick one. You wanna be a national, you must create a state, check the boxes. Moors subjects been sending all kind of documents to the colonists, the colonists is laughing at us. Said they ain't figured it out yet, cause they don't read, which means to comprehend and use forensics. But Moors keep using this document, man, the, the, the ICJ said, the United States don't have jurisdiction over us, that's not true. Matter of fact, they said just the opposite. It was unanimous. But how do we fix it? Ain't no use in pointing out problems unless you got a solution. Mothers. You gotta bring your rogue Moors back into the matriarchal council and create legislation to save your fallen humanity of Moors. That's the truth. Mothers, you have to create a state, you have to use that intellect that you have to create a state, bring your Moors and create the state. Check the boxes. Now you're poised to have full powers to be a Moors national and no longer subjects and proteges. That's the answer to the test. Watch this, I'll keep proving it. Watch this. They keep talking about eighteen thirty-six, right? Peace and friendship. Eighteen thirty-six. Right? Mother, can you read article one for me? Cause all the Moors say, go to article twenty, go to article twenty-two, go to article twenty-three, go to article twenty-four, they skip right past article one, let's read article one.
Article one. We declare that both parties have agreed that this treaty consisting of twenty-five articles shall be inserted in this book and delivered to James R. Lee, agent of the United States and now their resident counsel at Tangier with whose approbation it has been made and who is duly authorized
Duly.
Duly authorized on their part and to treat with us concerning all the matters contained therein.
Okay, we gonna stop at article one, we're not gonna look up any more articles, cause Moors ain't been able to check the box on article one, what happened, watch this. We declared that both parties, in order to be a party, you must have a state. That's the truth. Both parties have agreed that this treaty consisting of twenty-five articles, so therefore the twenty-five articles only relate to people got a state shall be inserted in this book and delivered to James R. Lee, agent of the United States. Who's an agent, someone that's been appointed by someone that's duly elected that has checked all these boxes, so the United States of America, not to confuse the United States, saying, we checked the boxes that authorized them to go negotiate a treaty. Watch this. And now their resident counsel at Tangier with whose approbation it has been made and who is duly authorized. Moors aren't duly authorized to do nothing. They can't enforce treaties unless they have a state, become elected officials, not self-appointed. You must be duly authorized, duly mean, elections. Moors must start understanding international law. Watch this. Start with, with whose approbation it has been made and who is duly authorized on their part to treat with us concerning all the matters contained therein. You must be duly authorized in order to do anything in regards to the matters of the entire treaty, ain't no use in talking about article two. To Moors, get past article one. Our misconceptions, we have missed the concept of understanding state. I'll give you more reference points. All right. They keep talking about the nineteen oh-six Act of Al-Jusseris, which is a multilateral treaty with Morocco. If you go to article one oh one, so Moors at, at home, when you're studying, study chapters five and six. When you're studying the nineteen oh-six Act of Al-Jusseris, study chapters five and six, that's where he's talking about jurisdiction and fraud. My favorite word. Watch this, article one oh one, if you get one of the most, read it, please.
The Moors Customs Authorities shall directly inform the diplomatic or counselor agents of any violations of this regulation which may have been committed by those under their jurisdiction in order that they may be prosecuted before the, uh, before the competent court. Similar violations by Moors subjects shall be brought directly by the customs before the sherif, the Sheraton?
Sherifin.
The Sheritan.
Sherifin.
Sherifin Authority. A delegate of the customs shall be charged to follow the legal proceedings in cases pending before the, uh, the several jurisdictions.
So they talking jurisdiction again. Article one oh one of the nineteen oh-six Act of Al-Jusseris. Watch this. Moors must now start to learn how to read article one oh one, the Moors Customs Authority shall directly inform the diplomat or concert agents of any violations of the regulations which may have been committed by those under their jurisdiction in order that they may be prosecuted before the competent court. Moors don't have competent courts, why? Cause Moors don't have a state. Moors claim they have constable court? No, you don't. If you don't have a state, you don't have constable court. You're not an authorized official, you have no judicial authority whatsoever, cause you don't have a state. Watch this. Similar violations by Moors subjects shall be brought directly by the customs before the Sherifin Authority. A delegate of the customs shall be charged to follow the legal proceedings in cases pending before the several jurisdictions. So what's happening? Delegate of the customs shall be charged. All these people are what you call duly authorized people they're talking about who have set up and checked all these boxes. They're not self-appointed, nothing. They're all officials that's been elected, or officials that've been elected have appointed agents to take care of affairs of their state. So on the Act of Al-Jusseris, if Moors don't have a state, they're subjects. On the Act of Al-Jusseris, if they don't have a state, they're proteges. Which means, somebody else is protecting them, which means you come under their laws. Until you create your own law under your own state. Let's read article one oh two.
Article one oh two, every confiscation, fine, or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by counselor jurisdiction and on Moors subjects by Sheritan jurisdiction.
Okay, so watch this. Secondly, only Moors can deal with Moors based upon jurisdiction. But the United States, according to the ICJ, says, subjects are United States citizens. Subjects are United States citizens, why? They don't have their own state. So therefore, the country that you reside in, reside is a colonial word, not domicile, reside, reside is for persons. Moors domicile when they're Moors nationals. Moors subjects reside. Moors proteges reside. Moors nationals domicile, Moors keep putting their documents, they domicile, you don't domicile. That's not to be taken as a negative. We gotta correct this thing. Because if you don't have a state, you can't claim jurisdiction. If you can't, can't claim jurisdiction, you can't claim your domicile, you're a, you're a resident. And somebody else's corporate construct. That's the truth. Watch this, I'll give you some more reference points. Now, watch this, Moors talk about this document a lot, this is what, we went over this document. What is this? This document is uh, your citizens abroad, your nineteen oh-six citizens, expatriation protections abroad. Nineteen oh-six, same year, nineteen oh-six. Same year, nineteen oh-six. You go down to page four fifty-nine to four sixty, talks about Morocco, Moors talk about this all the time. Let's put it in proper sequential order, what the United States of America, not to confuse the United States, all of a sudden come back to the United States, now they wanna put on a record about citizenship? Because they had just left the Act of Al-Jusseris of nineteen oh-six. Proper sequential order, so they just left. Put together a treaty as it relates to Moors subjects, now they come back to talk about these Moors subjects. Who don't have a state and protections, let's prove it. Morocco, we read this before. Okay. So let's just, I'm gonna read it relatively quickly for the mothers, okay, if y'all don't mind? Sir, there are, there are strictly speaking, no Moroccan laws relating to citizenship of Moors subjects in Morocco. So Moors can't be citizens, but they're classified as citizens. Why? Cause you're a citizen of the United States of America. You ain't a citizen in Morocco. They're trying to say you ain't in Morocco if you ain't a Moors national. Listen. The fundamental laws of this non-Christian country are based entirely upon the Islamic code, no part of which treats of the subject of citizenship. There are, however, numerous treaties and conventions between the various Christian countries and the Moors Empire by means of which citizenship in this country is defined, so the defining Moors as being citizens, because that's how the United States talk, they, they say, citizen. That's their language. Moors don't have the word citizen. Moors who call themselves citizens, that's slave talk. Moors can only be nationals or you can be a subject or protege. But if you want your rights, you're gonna be a Moors national, a Moor, according to the treaties, let's continue. But as I understand from the above acknowledged instructions, that it is not the desired department to call for report upon such lines. I will therefore confine these remarks to general conditions existing. which may possibly be of some use in connection with the information desired. What information desired? They just left from signing the Act of Al-Ghazaris nineteen oh six. Now they come back to the United States jurisdiction to talk about what was just signed. They gonna start releasing the fact that Moors don't have no protection, they gonna say it right in front of their face, watch this. I'll continue with this. I will therefore confine these remarks to general conditions existing, which may possibly be of the same use and connections with information desire. Number one, citizenship in Morocco may be said to be governed by the law pertaining to the same and other countries, with the exception that all persons residing in Morocco who cannot prove foreign citizenship or protections are considered, if so, juror, as Moorish subjects. What did the ICJ say about subjects? That you are bound by the United States laws. Number two and three, Moorish subjects lost their nationality only by becoming naturalized in or protected by another country, United States of America, having treaty relations with the Moorish Empire. So you lost your nationality. They put you on the subject status, which means you immediately under their laws, you became a citizen. And only way to get out of that status, that cast, since they put you in, you must have a state and pledge your allegiance back as a Moorish national. Cause they got to classify it as a Moorish subject. Moorish subjects have privileges, they don't have rights, they have privileges. They're stateless people. To recreate a state, you have no rights and you will continue to get adjudicated under Title twenty-two, United States Code one four one to one four three. That's the truth, let's continue. Read two and three again, Moorish subjects lost their nationality only by becoming naturalized in or protected by another country, so if you're protected, you come under those laws. Under another country having treaty relations with the Moorish Empire. Listen. It was established by the Convention of Madrid concluded July third eighteen eighty as follows. So watch this, now they gonna point out the secret that Moors have to do. Moors keep forgetting this part, cause we don't read, we just pronounce words, watch this. Article fifteen of the Treaty of Madrid, Moors love to put this in their documents. Total misconceptions about what it's about. Watch this. Any subject, any subject, any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and shall return to Morocco, shall after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization, choose entire submission to the laws of the empire and the obligations to quit Morocco, unless it should be proved that its naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco to remain as a naturalized subject. What are they saying? Moors ain't got no government they've checked in with to say whether they wanna be a Moorish national or a subject. They went automatically just far as fill out documents, they're, we're Moors. I checked the box nationality. And the colonists laughing, that's what they're saying. You still a Moorish subject. You never went back to your Moroccan government to put on the record, your open allegiance to your state. They give you the answers to the test right there, you gotta go back. They said choose. Moors ain't been choosing, they just been filling out proclamation documents. What did they choose? Nationality, they checked the box. That's where it starts. But guess what, Moors, there's more boxes. Watch this. Foreign naturalization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco, according to the rules established by the laws of each country, shall be continued to them as regards all effects without any restrictions. Wait a minute. Let's read that again. Foreign naturalization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco, according to the rules established by the laws of each country, shall be continued to them as regards to all of the sex, effects without restrictions. What are they talking about? Moors would say, oh man, soon as I say I'm a Moor, I, I shouldn't have no restrictions on me. That's called being, having a nationality. You then have to go out and create the state. Watch this. Watch what they say. The bar ruling has never yet been acted upon and this should at any time be contemplated seriously when these Moors find out that they should be Moorish nationals instead of Moorish subjects and proteges. When they figure out they're gonna be Moorish nationals, what's gonna happen? Watch this. The bar ruling has ne- never yet been acted upon and should this at any time be contemplated seriously, a large number of naturalized people, American and others residing in Morocco would be affected thereby. Meaning that when Moors wake up, realize they need a state. Watch this. Four and five, residence in the foreign parts does not affect the nationality of Moorish subjects. They saying you can have your nationality and the Moorish government has no means of protecting its subjects. They saying there's a Moorish government out there. If these Moors don't have no protections of them, why?
They don't have a state.
Don't have a state in northwest of Mexum, the Madrid, Alexa, the North Gate, Turtle Island. Commonly known as the United States of America. All of our governments were usurped. The matriarchal councils were ran over by the colonists and your sellout sons. They removed our governments on this side of the world. So Moors have been waking up. They proclaim their nationality and they just start sending documents totally incompetent as it relates to international law. Watch this. Four and five, residence in the foreign parts does not affect the nationality of Moorish subjects and the Moorish government has no means of protecting its subjects permanently residing in other countries, who's the other country? The United States of America, they tell you on the record, these Moors ain't got no protection. With the exception of a so-called Moorish consul in Gibraltar and a Moorish agent in Cairo, Egypt. You see what they just said? Listen, Moors. They say you got so-called protections on another continent. You don't have no protections in northwest of Mexum, which is a part of Moroccan Empire, Moors been skipping over this, you have to create a government. So then you can go back and either quit, you, Moors come back and quit with a pen or you consent to being a Moor again under your government or you consent to wanna be a naturalized citizen of the United States. You have a choice. But you gotta make a choice. Let me just say this. Any Moor out there saying, I'm a citizen of the United States. Okay. But guess what, Article fifteen of the Treaty of Madrid says, you still have to go to the Moroccan government to get permission to remain a citizen of the United States. You just can't make a, you allow a decision to do so. It considered treasonous once you put on FES and call yourself a Moor and a citizen. At the very least, you better have some documentation for me, Moorish government that says you can remain being naturalized for either you working outside of international law. France has been trying to help us, you must understand. Why was this created in nineteen oh six? Because France put together, was the common denominator putting together Act of Al-Ghazaris. Which forced the United States to come back and start talking about these Moors on the record. They forced their hand, now watch this. So this nineteen oh six. Nineteen twelve, here comes France again. Wait a minute. France, Morocco, keep that in mind. So this is the Treaty of FES, F E S, commonly known as Treaty of FES, F E Z of nineteen twelve. Soon as you go to Article six, what does it say? Mother, please read it.
Article six. The diplomatic and counselor agents of France shall be charged with the representation and protection of Moroccan subjects and interests abroad.
Stop, now we've talked about this before. Wait a minute, they signing this document in the Kingdom of Morocco in Africa. So why they talking about some Moroccan subjects abroad? Abroad means abroad, in another country, in another section of a continent, et cetera. They talking about the Moors in northwest of Mexum who didn't have protections. The United States just said that on a document. Citizenship, expatriation, protections abroad. Who are they talking about? Moors who are in the protections of the United States here in northwest of Mexum, i.e. known as North America. So now France is coming in, six years later, six years later, nineteen twelve, nineteen oh six, nineteen twelve, here comes France. They hang on the United States, y'all just don't get it. I'm gonna get the Moors from underneath you, that's what France is saying, they're constantly advocating the United States of America, cause they know the United States of America is holding on to the trust that belongs to the Moors. France knows if they get the Moors to wake up, the game is over for the United States colonists, you must understand that. It's a strategic move on France's part to keep trying to wake up the Moors. Article six, the diplomatic and counselor agents of France shall be charged with the representation and protections of Moroccan subjects. Not Moroccan nationals. Cause Moroccan nationals have protections, from who? United Nations Charter protects Moroccan nationals. Cause you're poised with full powers to protect your own state. So now France has come in to help the Sultan of Morocco protect Moorish subjects and proteges. Cause they don't have a state of their own to protect them. The United States said on the record, these Moors don't have protections where? Right here in what's called North America. So France is trying to extend some protections along with the Sultan. But Moors will tell you to this very day, we got protections, we, we got our nationality, we protected, that ain't true. You still a Moorish subject and a Moorish protege. That's not to be taken as a negative, we just gotta fix this, mothers. Let's continue reading, mother. Section six.
His Majesty, the Sultan pledges himself not to conclude any act of an international nature without the previous approval of the French Republic.
So what it, what it, the Moroccan, what did the Sultan do? He gave France a lot of power to go over and save the Moors. Can't understand, it's not that France is our friend. France doesn't like the colonists. They wanna take away the colonist's trust. The global bank. Soon you take away the United States Global Federal Reserve Bank, it's over. But France gotta wake the Moors up. Then the Moors can go and represent themselves as Moorish nationals with France being our ally. France will never have a lead. We lead, France is behind us, locked arms, working with us as ally. They've been working with us since sixteen thirty-one. Watch this. What am I underscoring here? France is trying to say who? Subjects. Listen. So what happens in nineteen thirteen? Consequential order, nineteen twelve, France is still helping, they come over in nineteen thirteen. France goes over to the United States, nineteen thirteen, January, to do what? French protector in Morocco to save who? Moors. Relinquishment of extraterritorial jurisdiction by certain foreign powers added to the United States. They're trying to undermine the United States by waking the Moors up and give them protection. What type of Moors? Moorish subjects. What other type of Moors? Moorish proteges. Because they knew the Moors didn't have a state. Watch this. The Moors aren't proteges, yes they are. Watch this, you go to page, I think it's nine oh eight. What does France open up with? Remember, they're talking United States. First thing they say is, if you know how to mothers read from turning first.
Turning first to the subject of the reversion, of the revision of the protege, protege.
Protege.
Protege list. Mentioned in Mr.
Perretes.
Perretes note of September fourteen. It is proper to state.
Continue.
That the protection of, of native Moors in Morocco by this government reset upon its treaty with Morocco of eighteen thirty-six and the Madrid, the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty. The relevant part of the treaty of eighteen thirty-six is found in Article fifteen, which reads as follows.
Stop. Moors gotta pay attention. France comes over, they say, first thing I wanna talk about is Article six of the Treaty of FES that the Moroccan Sultan gave, gave France full power to go and negotiate on behalf of the Moors who've been subjugated, who don't have no protections. What does he say? Turning first to the subject of the revision of the protege list, who's the protege? The Moors. This is what the ICJ said. In nineteen fifty-two. That subjects and proteges are still the property of the United States, listen. Mentioned in Mr. Patisse note of September fourteen in the proper to state that the protection of native Moors. Remember now, he's, he didn't, France that came over there in the United States. He talking about native Moors. Cause you standing in Morocco. But what is he specifically saying? Start from beginning, that the protection of native Moors in Morocco by the government rested upon its treaty with Morocco of eighteen thirty-six and the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty. The relevant part of the treaty is eighteen thirty-six is found in Article fifteen, we read Article fifteen. What did Article fifteen say? That Moorish subjects, when they wake up and come back to a government, they can either choose to be a national or they can continue to remain a citizen, subject, protege. They gotta choose. In the meantime, France is saying, I'll look out for those subjects. Cause they don't have a state, because they considered stateless people. We're in the year twenty twenty-one. This was in nineteen thirteen. Moors are still subjects, never put together a state. I don't say that as a negative. I say that because of misconceptions, Moors thought that we had this thing figured out, we did not. But now we're on the right track, as Taj Vee Bay says, we gotta get back on the yellow brick road. What's the yellow brick road? Studying international law, A. B, matriarchal council to put together your state. Three, we gotta learn how to read as Moors. We gotta stop pronouncing words, we gotta take the time to break down every word that we see. Get a full comprehensive understanding. Then an overstanding, then an understanding. So when Moors say, we're not proteges, that's not true, the ICJ said you're a protege. France called you a protege. That's the truth. There's only three classifications, that's the truth. Subject, protege, national, pick one. Watch this. Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty-nine, Article one. Let's go for the present convention. What's the convention? It's a treaty amongst all the nations around the world. Says what? Article one. Let's go for the present convention. Present convention applies to treaties between states. Not subjects and not proteges. Not self-appointed people. You gotta be a duly authorized official of your state and check the boxes. That's the truth, watch this. That's the truth, watch this. We'll go back to Article one again, Treaty of eighteen thirty-six, what does it say? Article one, we declared that both parties have agreed, parties, the parties must be a state. Moores can't even get past Article one of the Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty-nine. They can't get past Article one of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty-six, Article one. Why? Because we're stateless people. We can't enforce nothing until we have a state. Original jurisdiction under all treaties. You gotta really understand why the, why the Moores were subjugated around the world